So it looks like we're ready to start. I'd like to... Let's try leaving them open and just see what kind of traffic noise we get.
We'll just have to talk loud.
Right. So it's 6:04, I'd like to open up the meeting. Are there any adjustments at all to the agenda?
I don't think so.
I have a couple. I thought maybe at the end with the updates on other business, we just might have a short discussion about the Delta COVID and just kind of thinking ahead about what we might want to do or not do or just... And then it sounds like Chuck has this on his agenda too, but I thought maybe we would start a discussion on purchase of a new truck tonight.
You can see the...
Okay, well, I just want to bring it up and just have a very brief discussion about it. No decisions, of course, but just that. And that's pretty much all I have. Guys have anything?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Any public comment? Don't hear any? Okay, that's good. So do I hear a motion to approve the bills to the town?
Zoom.
Second? Any discussion about bills at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the July 26, 2021 Select Board Meeting?
I'll second.
Any discussion about the minutes at all? Okay. So all those in favor of approving the July 26, 2021 Select Board Meeting minutes, I'll say aye. And now I'm reminded of another adjustment to the agenda. The Liberry Village Stormwater Mitigation Final Design Reviews are not going to happen this evening. One of the... The person from the Regional Planning Commission was not feeling well and there was a little confusion about the projector that we would be using and whether we had the right cables and we hadn't really tested it out. So we have postponed that agenda item for August 23rd. So next on the agenda is the Town Clerk Report.
I have spent the majority of my last two weeks still cleaning up the checklist.
How's that going? Is that painting?
Pretty good. I went from 150 that I had problems with, I'm down to 18.
Oh, wow. Very good.
She's tired of staring at the paper yet?
(laughing) Computer screen.
Perfect.
And I printed out, yeah, right, a checklist that I'm going to have Diana look over to make sure I printed the right one. I compared it to the 2019 and I think I have it right. And we did receive back a signed contract from Washington County Sheriff's.
Okay. Have we received back a signed contract from the painter for the library roof?
Roof? You got the roof?
Yeah, the roofer.
That one is back.
It is back?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Just making sure that we had it. Okay, good.
So will they be submitting invoices or do...
Well, the roofer?
Yes. But they are there, but I'd like an invoice.
Okay, what they mentioned is that they would be asking for the 1/3 deposit when the shingles came in. So and the projected date that they were given by the supplier was August 24th.
Okay.
So...
I just didn't want to let them know that I wasn't paying them.
No. No, they're going to notify us.
They'll check, that's how it works.
Yeah. They'll be notifying us that the shingles are in and then they'll be wanting a check then.
Sorry. The in-between checklist I've been working with Diana on the lead report is...
Okay. Yep. Can you tell me what's happening in the parking area in front of the town office?
We're going to have a flooding pool.
You're putting a hole in, that's awesome.
Is there a break in the water line to the town?
For somebody who's water laundry, forget that we have a jam.
Well, they dug a hole. What are you doing?
Maybe jump in ahead of yourself. The leach field for the downtown office between the road and the parking lot.
So that may be the leach field.
The leach field for the town office is leaking?
And it looks to me it don't run all the time. It ain't been ready for the last 10 block hours. And it didn't overleak it. And it's looking to me like it's more like the leach field is full and backing up there in the road. And it's not showing because the septic tank is higher and the bathroom is higher.
Yep.
Now, I don't know, but that's my guess right now.
Okay. So when a leach field no longer leaches, what does that mean?
Put a new one in somewhere.
It means you either got to take that one out and clean stone out and get the dirt all cleaned out and put new sand in and new stone and new pipe. And being that close to 14, you probably going to have to have an engineer.
Yeah. Okay.
If it's a slightly limited space, you don't have to bring it up to the modern standards for septic. You have to do the best you can.
Right. But being that close to the highway, I'm sure somebody is going to want to be involved in it.
That must be right. It's right on Route 14 right of way too, I would imagine.
Yeah.
And it's going to be checking the permit.
Yep.
My plan is tomorrow we're going to... Let's put that on hold for a few minutes.
Okay. All right. You have... You know, technically that's not a town highway issue. So... But we'll talk about it later.
The leach field to the town office is not a town issue?
Not a town highway issue.
Oh, yes, I know.
Okay.
That's why we'll talk about it later.
Okay, we'll talk about it later. When would you like to talk about it?
When you ask me what to talk about.
Should I make an adjustment to the agenda?
We'll fill in. It seems like it needs to be discussed if we got Buffalo accrued in the...
Well, we'll tag it with the town hall discussion. How's that sound?
Well, yeah. We can go ahead. I just didn't want anyone to drop the rating before they got done.
Okay, so let's do it after the town clerk and town treasurer report. Okay. All right. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Anything else for Robin?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Robin at all?
Well, I can get postcards today for...
Oh, good. Yeah. Dr. Bates, postcard stamps to...
You're not stamping? Not stamping, no.
Re-stamped or re-charge?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Town Treasurer's report.
So for income after receipts, total that was taken in was $2,829.16. That's detailed records restoration, copies at cost, ring mount passports, land records recording, land recording copies, posting land, reclaim taxes, bulk fees, and vital record. Delight and C taxes was $449. That does not include the interest and penalty. Direct deposits that were put into our bank account. Da-da-dah. The ARPA first deposit of $46,219.16 was put into our checking.
Wow.
Also, from a state that is toward property tax, it was $2,580 even. And once the tax rate is set, then I will take that off our current tax revenue. I kept over $7,000 over into the money market. And as you can see on your balance sheet, there is roughly $36,000 in there. And I'll be doing another transfer tomorrow over into the money market. So I was cleaning up, closing out the fiscal year-ish. I have one more transaction I need to do. And then I'm putting away files so all of fiscal year '21 can be audited. And then it's off to tax bills, which I'm going to get out by this Friday.
Wow. Okay. So will the audit be by our town auditor?
Yes, since we can budget for an outside audit.
Right. Okay.
Right now we still currently have only one.
Only one. Right. And now I guess...
The volunteers, please come to the office.
Do we know if we need to have more than one auditor?
Yes, we do.
We do? So technically, we can't do the audit?
Correct.
Hmm. Okay. Interesting. Maybe we should put something on Front Porch Forum and see if there are other auditors or other people willing to sit in on that? Maybe we could...
Right.
Yeah.
So we did... After town meeting, we had put something out.
Right.
No takers.
And there's our... The one auditor that we have, I know his issue was that he would... He's usually sailing far away when it's time to do the audit. So do we know if he's even in Woodbury at the moment?
I haven't heard from him.
Yeah.
I sent him an email last week, but I haven't replied.
Brandy, what's our date again?
What's that?
What's our date?
What's our date? As far as completing the audit, our town report has to be printed by December.
By December. Right, so we have some time.
We did some, yeah. So we have it. Year and it's been done between now and the end of January.
And now to send a... We can find something?
Doing outside audit still need... Those are the places that need to have town auditors.
I agree. I don't disagree.
But if you have an outside audit, we don't need town auditors.
Well, yeah, you still do because we have to.
Towns that I know of that have outside audit do not have auditors.
Right, a lot of towns have actually gone to outside auditors because they have a hard time finding people to do that. So I'm thinking off the top of my head now. Well, yep. We have nothing budgeted at all. But we do have $28,000 that we didn't have to spend on winter sand.
Well, that's the highway budget.
Yes, but can we take from the highway budget to... We can't do that. Okay, so... All right. And but we did have money left over in the general budget, $20,000 something dollars?
Yes, I have used it and on your balance sheet we're at negative $58,000, $50,000... $61,000 in the general because of expenses that we paid starting until July 1.
Okay. So we're basically kind of dipping into our kitty until the taxes come in, right?
Yep.
But we could use that $20,000 theoretically. We could use that $20,000 to hire an auditor.
But typical, when we did go out for...
You went out to bid a couple of years ago, didn't you?
I remember.
Yes.
You only responded with some of the colors.
Yep.
And that was a three-year contract, starting off with $12,000. It's a law fee for three years.
We may be up against it here.
Yeah, I mean, we could put it out to bid and just see what comes... What comes back.
I can send you to bid, just change the dates.
That being what the wise to do here, because I can't... If we don't have enough auditors to do an audit, we got to do an audit.
We got to do an audit.
In order to replace the town auditors with annual private sector audit, I think that has to go to the voters.
Yeah.
I was wondering what you're supposed to do if you don't have auditors to do the audit.
I think we just have to do what needs to be done.
That's what I think too.
If somebody wants to hang us for it, then let's...
We'll let them volunteer to be an auditor. Then we'll have two.
Yeah, we'll sign them up.
I don't know what else to do.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we can go to the town meeting without having auditors to blow us.
This sounds like a question for VLCT.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so...
I don't think we have to decide that tonight.
No. But so we'll continue discussing this, figure out a way.
We should probably put it on next week's, next two weeks' agenda.
We will. Yep. It'll be on each other.
Sign on notice.
Sure. Yes. I may have it.
May not.
Okay. All right.
I was like, just change the dates.
Okay.
Just don't know what else to do.
No. Not a lot of options.
We can't do it, so.
Right.
We can't.
Okay.
I can fix mutually exclusive to our jobs if we approve the expenditures.
There's no way.
It's conflict of... Again, you add all offices.
It's conflict of interest. Thankfully.
Thankfully. You're smarter than we are.
All right. So anything else, Brandy? We will... We're at our... I do have tag to set the tax rate.
So we are having some conflicts with our current email.
Right.
So the town officials, so the treasurer, the clerk, the listers, the assistant clerk, will all be getting, and the highway, will all be getting new emails. Hopefully as soon as next Monday.
And can you explain the new system, just for the record? It's through our town website? I understand right?
It's an forum.
We're going to be using the same other email system that we have. And you think it's just a server is going to be different.
Yeah, and who?
We all have Comcast.
We all have Comcast. Right.
And this whole issue came around because I cannot send out emails.
Yes, I learned that the hard way.
Simple Skip is...
He got fixed.
...in the Comcast.
Yep. They don't respond to his inquiries, is my understanding. So who will be the new server?
It's Doris. Other than that, I don't know IT.
Okay. Because I know Skip's been working with Ben Witt or...
Yep, Ben took on, he's going to be our IT guy now.
Okay. Good.
He's moving, but he will... He's willing to stay on to get our vacuum calls and our computers.
Oh, that's nice of him.
He said that he's going to be able to forward our current emails and he will go over just to the new, straight to the new one. So there won't be any losses for our special companies or the state sending information.
Okay.
That will also be on our new... Our new emails will be on the website. The other thing is our credit card machine is up and running. So I will also put that on the website and have that do it. And if anybody is interested in the direct debit as far as taxes for the account reform will be on the website. So I don't, I won't spend making 863 copies and inserting another tax bill.
Did Ben say, let's say I sent Michael an email or Michael sent me an email and it pops over to that new email address? Is he going to get notified that I have a new email address?
What I usually tell people is put it in your name at the bottom to say pay attention, I have a new email address. Just put a note at the bottom of your name.
Yeah, we can probably all sign it with that.
Your signature.
Maybe could... You have sort of an email tree that you started, a town email list?
Yeah.
Maybe we could send a notification out on that.
Yeah, that's one of our...
Okay, yeah.
Why can't you send it out? So why can't you send it out?
(laughing) Good point. That's it.
Weird. It doesn't make much sense to me why I can't send emails out but Brandy and Diana.
Because you broke it.
I guess it's just your luck.
It must be. Don't be...
Sometimes things on computers don't make sense.
You're right.
Yeah, sometimes. I know Skip sent... Skip Marcassoni sent me a bunch of emails that I've never received. So I don't know what's going on with Comcast. Okay. Anything else, Brandy, at all for...
Yep.
Okay. So tagged onto the town treasurer's report is setting the tax rate for the next fiscal year, fiscal year '22. And in our town report and approved at... I guess it was approved by Australian ballot this year because we didn't have a town meeting. The tax rate that was approved was 0.546 cents per, what's that? $1,000 worth of property. So I guess what we need is a motion to approve that amount.
I think you need to refigure it. You need to, now that there's a new grant list amount...
Right, does she have a number of the new grant list?
Take your total amount that's budgeted and the new grant list amount. I forget which one goes on top and which one goes on the bottom, but that... A number that was in the town report was just...
Was off the old grant list, yeah.
Do you have that figure, Brandy?
I don't have that one.
Okay. All right. So...
I think we have one more transaction to deal with as far as the listers.
I think they... I think they were applying.
He had the grievance. He had one more grievance.
Right.
You can't say...
Okay, so it's... Yeah. So it sounds like we need to get the new Brenda's total and do a quick calculation and probably have a special select board meeting to approve that. Okay. So you want to get tax codes out on Friday. So we could do this...
Thursday.
Thursday?
I got the time Thursday.
Why don't I try down the town office?
Where we can finish timing.
Okay, yeah. Yep, okay. That sounds good.
Were you talking to the...
I just plug into the...
We've got iPhones around here.
We can calculate. I don't know if I'm smart enough to do it, but the phone...
There's somebody over there.
Somebody should.
So who remembers the formula? I have it on a piece of paper, but I didn't... I didn't bring it with me.
Just one divided by the other.
Right. Okay.
It doesn't make any sense to me the other way.
Is the formula on that?
Yes. And everybody has it.
So... Just plug it in. Okay, so yeah.
Well, they have it on...
Yes. This is the town report. This is the formula.
This is the formula.
This takes your expenses minus your revenues, the grant list, and equals out to the municipal tax rate, taxed on $100,000 per cell. So it does it down to the... I just want to verify the grant list if it's changed.
Okay, so...
That's why we're waiting for it to be done.
So we'll still be here, I think. Do you want to go get it? And then we'll just do it. Do it when you get back. All right. Anything else? Any questions for Brandy at all about the town treasurer report? All right. So we can move on to the...
This is a question.
Sure.
It's going to be the municipal tax rate.
Right.
Yes.
That's all we can deal with.
That's all we can deal with.
The state does the school.
Education is our...
Yeah, the education is...
The legislature does that for us.
Yeah, we can't touch that.
We just get told.
Yeah.
Told. It's an informal, informational thing.
So Chuck, I guess we're ready for the town highway report?
We've been working on the foster row over there, the foster hill row. That's been between last year and this year. It's been done from...
Top to bottom.
Blacktop all the way to the top of the hill. All new colors, all new gravel, ditch. She's probably got another half a day of highway CD. And then we'll finish that up. We're over here at the school now. We dug on that white rock today and it doesn't... So tomorrow, that's coming out.
The rocks, the white rock?
Yeah.
We turned it up to your front yard.
So I am glad you're here. I'm glad you're here because you want in one of these parks?
I don't know. How big is it?
Big enough, so we're going to have to get the quarry down here and move it.
Hey, is it a nice place for it?
Over here?
Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe we're the... Tomorrow, if it comes out, it's going inside that new central pond over here in front of the annex building until we decide what's going on. So you've been a few days. We're going to box that sign up tomorrow and probably Wednesday we'll move that. By the end of the week, I'm hoping that the park will look pretty well.
Wow. Great.
I'm hoping.
Yeah.
And then there's the town hall subject down there. Robin talked to Gary Clark. And he thinks that his water is working all right.
Gary Clark?
Yeah. And the only other thing I can think of, if it's not a water line, it's going to be that leach field. But we're not getting any smell from it. And usually with a leach field, you will.
The fact that the septic tank was just pumped out last fall.
That won't make any difference with the leach field.
I mean, it has to... The septic tank has to fill up first before it starts ready to release it.
And you don't think that's full over there?
But it could be because the septic tank... Septic tank was full and maybe some of what was in the septic tank.
I'm not particularly leaning towards it being the leach field. But Greg and I talked about it and I wanted to say something to you before I went ahead and did it. But I think on one day I'm visiting with my excavator, dig it up and find out what it is.
I seem to recall that being a problem with Gary with water line to that house right across the...
Forever is forever.
I think Gary's water comes from the hill back behind it.
I don't know.
Or did you... Below George Sawyer, that field? I think it comes from that one.
Last year he was looking out and...
On the other side of this side of the church.
Yeah. Used to, years ago, used to fill up from behind the church.
Okay.
Don Mason and that one were on the same spring.
Oh, okay.
Years ago. But I haven't done anything again right there for...
We should check in with Gary because I know that last year his spring dried up.
Correct.
And it didn't sound like... Of course, nobody's in the Mason house, so they wouldn't know.
Well, they had them, like this one did.
Yeah. Yeah, we should find out from Gary which... Where that spring is. And it sounds like it was and probably still is from, you know, behind the town office somewhere.
I would guess it is. And Don Mason's... Well, Mason House. Brandy has a map of that that shows the water line, the one behind the town hall.
Town Office?
Yeah. That, the town office. So that, I believe, is out back.
Okay.
But irregardless of whether it's Gary's or not, I mean, every time you got to figure out what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think going and see if you can see what it is, like, that makes sense.
Yeah.
At least if we got to do something, I'd rather get started and wait, than wait till November.
Yeah, although technically if it's Gary Clark's water line, it's kind of his.
Right. We need to start getting it.
True. But I would...
You didn't answer the question. You didn't answer the question really fast. With two scoops.
Couple scoops and a low answer.
Two scoops and another answer.
Well, it'll be a little more than that because it shouldn't be four or five feet deep right there.
I doubt that it's that deep anymore.
I don't know why it doesn't freeze the water.
I bet it's come up more than you can imagine.
Well, I guess the question I'm asking is do you want me to get out of there or you want to have somebody out? Doesn't matter.
If you're willing to do that, do it. Keep track of your hours, you may be killing Gary Clark.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, I'll keep track. I'll call him in the morning and talk with him.
Okay.
But I really don't... It could be the leach field, but I really don't think it is because there's no smell.
Smelling.
Yeah. It looks pretty clean. I mean, it looks pretty clear. You might... If you're going to call him in the morning, you probably want to call before 7:00. I know he usually heads to work 7:00.
Does he? Or maybe at college and I...
Yeah, tonight might be better.
Can I interject to anybody?
Sure.
My name is Sather. I live at 276 Maple Road. Just up, that's our front field right in front of the... But we have smelled sewage. About twice in the past month.
There.
Just walking up and down Maple Road.
Boy, the dad would hope from there up that track.
Well, I don't know when you take a scoop out.
Oh, yeah. It won't take me an hour or so, not a good no, but hell's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, you don't know. It'll turn up.
Just because Gary thinks his water is fine.
Doesn't mean it is.
Says me it's fine. Still could be leaking.
Yeah. It may be part of his problem last summer too.
Could be. Could be, if it's leaking underground, let your spring out.
Well, yeah, but my concern is if he says he doesn't want it fixed, I mean, we're gonna have to.
We're gonna have to fix it.
Can't they?
That's what I would do.
Yeah, call. I can't imagine him not wanting to get it fixed if it's leaking, but, yeah, anyway, keep us posted.
I will.
Any, anything else town highway wise?
Yeah, a couple for the, that holds a quick exchange bucket on the escalator is wore out. And we called it, they even got a price on it, it was $3,300. But we're gonna end up wearing both buckets out if we don't do something with it.
Yeah, we should fix it.
To fix it.
With that, fix it.
Fix it. That's a good accelerator.
It is, it's broken, it's, we just done the groundwork on it, so it'll be foolish not to.
It appears not to. It's worth, it's, it's worth more than.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, but I speak for myself directly. It's worth fixing, if it has to be fixed.
And we sent one of the trucks to challenge voice to Gary if you're limited.
Okay.
And last year we put, you guys put $30,000 or something in this truck. And I don't know what it's gonna cost this year, but the truck has got less than 100,000 miles on it. That truck should be good for a million. So I'm not looking forward to you guys ordering the truck, if you're gonna keep what $30,000 a year, you ain't getting your money back.
I guess that was our next one. That's part of the reason for having a replacement schedule for trucks?
That's right.
Because you start sinking as much money or more money into.
Something costly, you might order a new one.
Well, except you ought to have money enough to pay for the first new one.
Correct.
Well, that's, that was our, that was our hope and, and we, you know, we can look at the figures and see if that might be a possibility, but that's part of, you know, that's what Hardwick does, other towns do, they sell.
Yeah, I don't care what Hardwick does.
Okay, alright, well.
If that taxi is going out and if you've got trucks, should be good for a million miles and you've only got 100,000 miles on it, and you go spend $260,000 for another truck.
Well.
That ain't in the best interest of damn.
You're thinking enough, don't order one right now.
I'm saying wait another year before you order, if you, if it ends up being without.
That would put it two years out.
That would put it two years out.
Matt, what's the recommendation on the road commission?
So, yeah, alright, that's.
Chuck, what do you think about what needs to be done? How much are we gonna spend on another year's worth of work?
I would, it shouldn't be anywhere near $30,000 this year on that one, but if you got another one that's going down right afterwards, it is all the other one was when it went for $30,000, so.
So part of the reason for having a schedule is to, to try to avoid the, you know, eventually you're paying as much in repairs as you would to be paying for a new truck. And then you're dealing with a truck that could break down in the middle of the winter, so that, that's the reason some towns have these replacement schedules and they, and they budget for them.
Exactly, but we, where's the budget for this one?
There's no budget right at the moment, we do have a HERF fund.
Yeah.
We'll be putting more money into it with fiscal year '22 and we could see how much money is in there.
Right, and I think in '22, you definitely need to order a truck.
So next summer?
Yes.
So ordering a truck next summer means that we'll have two more winters on both of those trucks and probably other more winters on whichever truck we don't replace. So.
We said it down there last year and they had no regulars in all this year.
Okay.
Not sponsored, not.
Okay.
And even, you know, even if you buy, you buy a new truck and it took a warranty and everything else, in four years, about half the life of what you're figuring, you're gonna keep a truck for five years, it should be down, gone down and gone through. Because that truck's a year before.
And it has been, those before.
I liked it in last year.
Right, yeah, but you know, part of it is, is that when it's gone through, that there's a warranty that covers whatever they find that they need to fix. So it's just, you know, that's just some of the thinking behind having a, a replacement schedule.
And I agree with you, you definitely need one, but you're gonna need to feed that to yourself, so you don't pay a lot of interest.
We kind of went down this road of gonna pay cash for the next truck, so I think, I don't think.
That's what I agree with.
Correct.
We thought about this and that's what was.
Right, so we're gonna gotta hold our stomach for it and just say, if it costs us 20 grand to repair it, that's still lower than a truck payment.
Right, and, but we may have enough cash with fiscal year '22 to pay for a truck.
And I think you will.
So we, what we gotta do is look at the numbers and, and kind of discuss this some more, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. You know, rather than spend.
But we've also, the second issue, we've also got a road commissioner that's recommending that we.
Yes, and I, and I definitely have an ear for that, but it doesn't mean that we wouldn't have a discussion about it.
That's fair.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure, sure, I get it.
Yep.
We change the line.
So let's get the numbers.
Let's get some numbers and look, look at what we'll have in the HERF fund for fiscal year '22. We have a rough idea of what a truck would cost, you know, so just let me finish out this thought about, you know, so if we, if we were, so let's say we took this scenario that we would decide that we would replace a truck. So that would be for, and we made that decision this summer, fall, we wouldn't have a truck until the following year. Basically, what I've been told is that, you know, from the time that you make a commitment on a truck, there's a year of waiting for the truck to actually be available. And then we also have set up our payments in the past with the contracts for paying for truck to be, happen in October 1st when we're pretty flush with tax money, rather than this time of year when we're kind of scraping the barrel and borrowing money to keep things going. So technically, if, if we were to purchase a truck, let's say before the winter of 2022, '23, we could defer the payment until fiscal year '23 or '24. So there is ways that we would have even more money in the, in the HERF fund, so that's why, let's play with the numbers and just see what, what the possibilities are.
That's right, but let's keep in mind that we've got two that you want to add for the place.
Right, yeah, that's, I am keeping that in mind, that's what worries me, we have two that we need to.
Our goal is to get to no payments, that's what we want to get to.
Right, yeah, and I, you know.
And I don't think it's that far out, no, I've got a reach.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not anyway advocating for raising the taxes to do this, I, you know. So, but let's just see what we can do with the, with the numbers and see what, so maybe we should start actually making a plan. Schedule for replacing both trucks and see, see what we've got for funds.
I think we should, and we, and I don't know when the loggers pay that fee.
Couple, couple of years, actually.
We hope of that.
Yeah, three years before, based on lives.
And then log bros, that we log to a great.
Four years.
So the two trucks that will be, that will need to be replaced and to be tracked.
Yes.
We gotta get them, we also gotta get them separated by their replacement cycle.
And that's.
We can't, we can't keep doing this.
Right, what we gotta do is get them so if they're, if it's an eight-year cycle, you want to be replacing one every seven or eight years.
Seven years, that's, that's why I'm thinking if we can replace one sooner, opposed to later, then we have a few years to, to stagger it with the other truck if we can.
If they're only one year apart.
Yeah, and then inhaling fire.
No.
And if you take, if you, even if you have to put, on an average of $15,000 a year into one of them trucks, until you can get situated, where you can pay for one and go along and not have two payments right together.
Right.
That's where we want it.
That's, that's, that's the goal, we have the same goal, Chuck.
Yeah, I know.
So let's warn about meeting, and I don't care if it's next one, I have to just to have this, look at the numbers.
Okay. After it's you.
Yeah, we can't, because we gotta get those, because again, we're gonna look at whether, if we do one next year and then four years, just to kind of get them.
Yeah, sometimes we gotta give them separate.
Yeah, we have to separate.
Check for it.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it, we'll start looking at the, what we'll have for money and how we might do that. Okay.
That truck, if you do, when you do cycle to my line, it'll go out to bid too.
Yes, it will, it'll have to go out to bid. Yep, yep, do that. I, I don't think they have a choice.
Nope.
No.
Just in policy.
It's gotta go out to bid.
Right, that's good.
Yeah, it might not be a Ken.
What's that?
It might not be a Ken was.
Well, these are freight liners, but international and them that we got straight up, should have a chance at it.
So we're gonna have to be flexible on the platform that we, that we get.
Yeah, but basically, except for cab, I would say.
You can order transmission you want in any little truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we have to, you know, be willing to be flexible to a degree, basically, yeah. So if we were to put it out to bid, would we put it out to bid for the cabin chassis and then separate bids for the body? Would that be the way to go?
Yeah, I would think, no, I would think freight liner would give you a bid on the whole truck.
That's the easiest for us.
We're gonna bid on the truck.
Yeah, complete unit.
Well, it'd be a complete unit if you bid.
That would be the smart thing.
Get it out.
Yeah, yeah, although there are different companies that also do the bodies.
You can't, yeah, you'd have to separate it.
The freight liners that, that we have now were not done by Charlois, they were done by somebody else.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess that, we'll figure that one out too. Yes, Skip?
Do we understand or know what the trade-in value for the truck that was purchased in 2013?
I would think that maybe we could make that part of the bidding process to get a figure from the people bidding. I mean, we know what it was two years ago.
Right, yeah.
I think that if, if we.
Every year when they reported on that, 40 to 50.
Yeah, every year gets less.
Every year's.
I have, I have a clue. But we could, that could be part of the bidding process, what will you give us for a trade-in on the old one?
Well, definitely, you definitely want to, that would be the only way to get a bid.
Exactly, right.
With them accepting the trade.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so we'll keep that on the agenda and continue to discuss it. Anything else on the town highway report?
Just one, I was wondering, we talked about getting a survey and starting and stuff, or was?
Yeah, I haven't done anything on that yet, but yeah, that's still, that's on my list.
Okay. Other than that, I guess not.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. No questions for Chuck then, okay. So next on the agenda is cycling hazard mitigation opportunity with Michael and Skip.
Thank you for having us. Michael and I are both members of the planning commission and we're in the throes of writing a new town plan. And we decided that it would be a good idea to keep proactive and mitigate the hazard that Michael's finding on our gravel roads when he bicycles. And we made, well, Michael cooked his presentation together and I'd like Michael, if he could, to go over it, because he's a bicycle rider and I'm more of a, not a bicycle rider.
You're more of a.
He knows, he knows exactly where the hazards are and we have some literature on how to mitigate those hazards.
Okay, as Skip said, I'm on the planning commission and an avid cyclist, I'm probably riding Woodbury dirt roads just about every day, every other day. And a couple of opportunities, I've just selected seven, that could use potential a little bit more signage to make drivers aware that there are cyclists in an oncoming lane. Some of these have, some of these turns have apexes that people like to cut, you'll find people head on to you in the oncoming lane, whether you're in a car or in bicycle, on bicycle. The first location, well, the proposed cost, I think, is important to go over first, about $840, seven intersections, two signs per intersection, $60 per sign. Location number one is Cabot Road at the very top of the hill. Location two, King Pond Road just north of the intersection of Foster Hill Road. Location three is that almost, that, that blind curve, Tebets Hill Road by King Pond. The fourth is Cranberry Meadow, there's a blind turn just off of the county road, although you could pick any spot on Cranberry Meadow. Dog Pond Road just south of Valley Lake is location number five. Again, a stretch of road from, from the intersection of Valley Lake back to where Valley Lake actually, I think that's Valley Lake, where Dog Pond comes out towards Tebets Hill. You could pick any spot there. Location six is the county road just south of Dog Pond Road. And then there's a big blind descent on Valley Lake that does have some signage, but probably worth noting that it's tight enough and at a sharp enough aspect that folks need to kind of take up. Folks do need to cut that apex a little bit, even going post, even going post-ferment, which I think is 35 on that road.
That particular spot, Michael, is the one where we're thinking of creating a new section of road to eliminate that corner.
Okay.
But that, it's gonna take a couple of years for that to happen.
Yeah. Understood.
At least one year.
The selected sign is this cyclist may use full lane, which is a pretty common sign and increases sort of the cyclist's perception of where their correct position is. It can be hard to tell on a road with no shoulder where you're supposed to be, especially if the driver's oncoming or behind you.
Is that a new, the cyclist's what?
Cyclists may use full lane.
Full lane, okay, it's actually both lanes then.
Do you think someone would understand what that sign is telling them when they came upon it?
Yes. A motorist or cyclist?
A motorist.
Both.
I think so.
So dumb question to me, these are proven corrective action, okay, stuff, it's not, we're not making this, something's been used elsewhere. Okay, no, I saw that, I guess it did, it's a cyclist, it's a common.
No, I think, I think it is, and it helps to, it helps give you confidence as a cyclist to position yourself in a more prominent spot in the road. And there's some literature that we've included here that I think speaks to that, and speaks to the benefit of this sign over a share the road sign or another sign that maybe, you know, you feel they're, they're, they're oversigned and they're maybe not doing the right job anymore. Cost estimate, 840 bucks.
So that's a material cost.
Yeah.
So if you hit it, I hit it with a factor of 1.5, so the total installed cost would be $1,260. That equates to approximately 17,000 dollars to install the sign, and that's at $25 an hour. So I don't know what the road crew's grow wages, but I factored in $25 an hour.
So you're, that amount included the labor cost?
Yeah, 1300, like 1300 or so includes.
With labor.
1260.
1260.
Which is material.
And these signs are approved by, are you ready for this?
MTC.
MUTCD, manual on uniform traffic control. Yeah, so. That's a Department of Transportation speak that says you can use any one of these signs for bicycles. So what we should be using is bicycles may use full lane.
Okay. So, so that just, I'm just still trying to understand the language on the sign, so that's pretty much telling motorists that there may be a bicycle in the lane.
Yes, they should expect a cyclist in the center of that lane.
Okay, so we're basically in a half road.
That's actually the best spot on the road for a cyclist, I find.
Not in a ditch.
No, because of the.
It's just a gray.
It's nicely smooth there on the ground.
And it should be, it should be noted that even, even when everyone's playing nicely, the cyclist is disadvantaged from a, like, from a lane positioning standpoint, because they're usually riding on the least compacted portion of the road. And if you, yeah, and if you were to lose control, you would be falling into the lane.
Into a ditch.
Or, yeah, that's my, that's my fear is that I'm falling into the lane, yeah, the ditch I think I could handle.
Yeah, but not into the middle of the lane. So. I know there'll be budget for signs and this, I'm a little short, I can find that, but Chuck, does this seem like a doable thing for the road crew to put on, have it on the highway budget to purchase these signs? I mean, I, I use my divo rounds in the morning, of course, it's early in the morning, but I go down Cranberry Meadow Road and come back down Dog Pond Road every morning.
On your bike?
On my bike. On my bike, yeah. And I'm aware of these blind, some of these blind spots, and there are actually others that, um.
Yeah. Did research the cost of Bevo crossing signs too.
We could.
Well, we, we see that.
Those would be a real issue.
Yeah, well, the regulation states that they need to be at least a hundred feet from Michael Ray's house in all directions.
Okay. Well, the Beaver don't follow me home thankfully, but not yet.
Not yet.
And actually, if a couple of them get hit, then that'll just kind of help with the older population.
If the select were to push us, we could send the website where we can purchase the signs and the associated cause and the polls, if that's something you would like us to do. And send it to Chuck, because I don't believe the planning commission can order any equipment.
Right, though, probably would be up to the highway department to, to order them. Any?
I'm good with it, I mean, I get a lot of bicycle people going by my house.
I have a lot of people going by my house too.
We can make the road a better, safer place, and I think it's something we ought to do, so I'll make a motion that we.
I just have a good question, the sign that's like, you had to explain it, is there a tutorial of that sign?
Yeah, it's a bicycle.
That's it?
Yeah, it's got a bicycle, yeah.
Yeah, just as, it's just a simple icon of a bicycle and then the full text maybe is full lane.
That would add, it's a universal sign, it's been tried out and it works, and so I'll make a motion, we move forward with the project at a cost of around thirteen hundred dollars.
Awesome. Any more discussion on the, the motion? Chuck?
He's gonna throw a chair at us, and they got enough to do already, but.
I know you have a lot to do.
No, I, that don't matter.
No.
They won't, they won't take the.
They won't take it long to do that.
Okay, all those in favor, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, sounds like for you? Okay.
Good proposal, nice one.
You know, I see a lot of people walking the roads too, which is, I know whether.
There's a lot of that going right now, a lot of biking, a lot of walking.
Yeah, a lot of young mothers with children and usually a dog in tow, especially, you know, by my house anyway.
County road's full of people.
So, yeah. So I think this is a good thing.
Yeah.
A start of signs for, you know, slowing people down a little bit, and so that, yeah. So on the subject of slowing people down, um, Mary has a concern about Route fourteen speeding that, um.
I have, I've done some work on it. And, um, I spoke with Senator Hertzler.
Yeah.
And Senator Cummings, and have written to both of them, and received replies back.
Can you share?
The issue, oh, I've also spoken with, um, Jeremy Flanders up at the Swenson quarry.
Yeah.
So I was not able to get in touch with Dan Dallas, and he's the, he's one of the independent contractors.
Well, Jeremy should be able to.
Yeah, Jeremy, he's a, he's a.
Jeremy is extremely, um, receptive and cooperative.
He shoots it pretty great.
And he's the one that oversees the truck.
Right, his, his position was, you know, the guys come in our yard, but then they leave and they're on their own, which is perfectly.
Right, they don't, they don't watch them on the.
They have no control over who runs the city of the yard. We did touch on the fact that if they don't obey the speed limit, they could lose their contract, which is very, um, it's drachomia, but that could be a last resort.
Right.
We cannot change the speed signs because the town's not incorporated.
What? Skip did a lot of research and, I don't think that's such a true.
I was told by you.
No.
Yes, yes, I was told by Diana and.
We're municipality, they don't have to be incorporated.
Right.
Well, I'm trying to be organized, I'm just trying to get on the facts.
Okay, all right.
Organized here, but we can't ask the state to lower the speed limit on Route fourteen for a reason. My understanding of that reason was that because we were not like East Montpelier or.
So the speed limit has been lowered.
It was only lowered to forty a few years ago after a lot of lobbying.
Traffic study.
Taking on that.
Okay, so.
So there's the front of it.
There is, it should be lowered again. We have the MBI trucks that start early, we have the asphalt haulers.
Yep.
Which is a brand-new presence, and you know, they're those long, long, and they're very heavy and they go very fast. And then you have these dumb trucks that are like, they're, these are industrial trucks.
Right.
But there's also a really interesting report on, in the state of Michigan, and then there was another study done in New Jersey that just talks about and demonstrates through numbers and, and assessments and, uh, real-time studies, how much damage these trucks do to the road, which in turn is then thrown onto the taxpayer to pay off. Then you have the chance for accidents, we have a lot of cyclists best of late, we have a lot of elderly couples.
I don't go on Route fourteen on my bicycle.
There you go, and you never sit somebody with a baby carriage because it's too dangerous.
It's terrifying.
There's a lot of wildlife there, there are dogs, there's an organic farm, the exhaust cannot be doing that any good. So there's all these pretty concrete reasons why the speed limit is an issue. It's property values. If I had to sell my house and they were standing there watching these trucks go by, you'd have to be kidding me. I wouldn't pay for it, if I had known, I wouldn't have bought it.
So if the trucks were going at the speed limit that's posted now, um, would it be as much of an issue?
Well, like they said in Harvard, why did you buy the lower limit to twenty-five? They don't know day thirty. Well, they always go five miles more, so if you lowered it to thirty-five, then it only be gone forty-five, which is a big difference from fifteen, fifty-five. Um, maybe another speed sign now, you have one that's further up the road near that bend.
We did talk originally about having one kind of in the middle, um, so, which would be interesting.
It would take two, because you'd have to one each.
It's a policy issue.
Yeah, you have that one each side.
It's a policy issue, it's a safety issue, it's a taxpayer dollar issue, um, and it's an environmental issue.
An enforcement issue.
Enforcement.
Yes, well.
I mean, I can't go standing there and ask.
That's another struggle, because we can't get enforcement out of there.
That's another, that's another issue that we have to.
I went to Little Six Parish, so.
There you go.
There's a bicycle issue.
Thirty-five miles an hour to the town, to the town.
But he explained that they're really short. The short staff just sent out an email, he said he'd send out an email, and they didn't see what they could do. Then I saw another state trooper on Route three oh two in the parking lot at, um, Tamara, is it Tamara Road? So I was about to chat with him, and he said, yes, they got the emails, but this shows short staff, they cannot, and we're like, they want them to be.
We, it takes us, we have a wrecked wrecking, they waited an hour and ten minutes for the police to get there.
Right.
So, and that's true of all, not just the state police, but the Washington County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, my understanding is that we pay, there was a contract, and then every time they come out, we have to pay them hourly rate.
Yeah, that's right.
That's too expensive, you know, they do it.
That's the way it is, Mary.
No, but why are we gonna get a contract?
Well, so.
Why are we gonna get a contract?
No, no, just so we, to understand, we only pay them when they come, the contract just says the hourly rate they're gonna charge.
Right.
And we did, just so you know, we did try to see if we could contract with Hardwick PD.
Well, I'm glad I have seen this.
Yeah, but unfortunately, they got defunded somewhat, so there's no.
Because four, four of their officers left the staff, so they're short staff, and we've asked Washington County Sheriff's Department to come more, we actually budgeted quite a bit of money a few years ago for them to be.
Actually come.
More presence here, and they weren't able to live up to the contract.
Actually live up to the contract.
So, the enforcement is, is an issue, we, um, so right at the moment with our contract, which we just signed at our last meeting with the Washington County Sheriff's Department, the town, we budgeted five thousand dollars for the, um, coming fiscal year, and at that, with their new hourly rate, that gives us about three hours of time that they're present per week, per week. So we could ask them to be down by Woodbury Lake, and we could, and one thing that would be helpful to them is if you have a sense of a time during the day.
It's the worst.
Granite trucks start really early.
Okay.
They start before it's like.
And it's the trucks you're having the most trouble with?
Well, the granite trucks, I mean, they're, well, no, well, they're.
Yeah, they're heavy, yeah.
They're a little bit shaky.
It is, it's actually not our local trucks though. It's not our local trucks.
No, they're all.
It's our, it's our, it's our Quebec trucks that are.
That's what I said, they're independent contracts.
Yes, and, no.
A lot of these are coming out of Quebec, a lot of where I'm from.
They're, they're pouring right down from Chabro.
Right.
So it's harder to enforce in terms of timing, but if we have time, then we have an impetus for them to come at a specific time.
It's right, that's what they do at once.
So we can make that work.
Go ahead, Skip.
The signs have the capability of recording speed and time.
Which we just gotta read it off there.
Right, yeah. We should figure out how to do that.
Yeah, I downloaded, I downloaded the software, which supposedly would allow me to do that, but I just can't connect, it's all Bluetooth, I can't connect to any of the signs to get that information. So going back to the manufacturer and asking, you know, how to do it, I think is my next step.
But Mary, if we had some, if, if we requested for some of our time to be dedicated to between like four and six AM, we, we could do that, we, we could make that request.
It's between four to six.
Well, the, the trucks in the quarry are definitely not coming down the hill at four, I mean, I, I live off of Route fourteen, and at four, I usually am up at four o'clock, and it's really nice and quiet. Um, and then when you get.
Around five.
You have five, yep, five, six, seven, um, that's when it gets pretty.
Also have, um, treesman and carpenters, propane, propane trucks, they always see the speed.
It's a wild time between five and.
People are on their hurry, on their hurry.
Yeah, it's not just track control.
It's everything.
No, absolutely.
I gotta pass six cars nearby me this morning.
So maybe it's all right if we pass her a specific lane.
Yeah, I, I think we could do that.
And that early morning window might be.
But I wouldn't have high expectations, this has been a real struggle for us.
Yeah, this is not the first time we've heard this, and we also, you know, Robin read a letter from a person that lives here in the village with the same complaints. But, uh, the Washington County Sheriff's Department has said if we can give them a window of time when it would be effective for them to be there, they're, they would do their best to be there.
They could park, they could park on my driveway, they'll make it possible.
Don't forget the building.
Trucks come down about, what, seven or so? Seven or so, and then they make a second trip, and like, usually two or three of them at a time.
The trucks go up, usually at six o'clock morning up to this corner.
Yeah, they come out.
And they're gonna be back down off there before seven, or they're gonna wait up here.
Right.
Until the school's.
Yeah, so that's seven o'clock that they're moving in.
They're heading down, by seven.
Yeah.
And they one-nail through and then they're coming back up, it's usually nine thirty or so, they back up here at the second load.
For that second load.
But as far as like, well, I've followed Donnie Gelson a lot, I know him real well, I don't believe, maybe he doesn't have a jay break anymore, he hasn't break staggered, it's on the end.
Who's, who are we talking about, Don Gelson?
Yeah.
I've not.
So I don't, to, to single him out, I don't.
No, 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 I'm not, I did not single him out.
Well.
He was just, he was just making the training information.
But Mary, I think the thing, and I would be glad to make the call to Jeremy Flanders to let him know that people in town, especially people who live along Route fourteen, are complaining about the speed of the granite trucks, and he can tell all of the drivers.
It's all.
Well, we, but yeah, we can't, I mean, I don't know what we'll be able to do other than Washington County Sheriff's giving them tickets.
I think, I think the answer is get the sheriff, give them that window or.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that that's the answer.
And the, how do you share the actual ticket? A train, a train.
Yes, for sure, for speed.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah.
Ticket anybody.
They can take it.
And where's the ticket wrapped in that?
Uh, some of it comes back to the town and, and I, probably the rest goes to the Washington County Sheriff's Department.
To the court.
It's the little stream.
Skip, Skip might have the answer to that.
Well, there's an alternative, those signs can be retrofitted, I believe, to put cameras in them.
Right.
And so that's, you know, you travel to Europe and the UK and things like that, every intersection has a camera and a speed sign, and they'll photograph your license and record your speed. You know, we can do that, but then we would run a follow, I believe, of the ACLU or.
I think that, yeah, I think your point is really well made, however, I think that a first step, right, is to just have a little bit more presence. It could actually, you know, presence would be, would serve us well.
Really, it's hard.
That's the, unfortunately, that's the hard part.
You know, another thing that we can do is, um, we could, the Regional Planning Commission has those traffic monitoring cables, we could put a couple of those cables kind of midpoint, and they, they record speed also and the type of vehicle. So we could actually get a record, a week-long record of, you know, if it's trucks that are speeding, are they speeding? You know, when I drive down there, or when I come to any speeding sign, usually when I get to the sign and it's flashing, I'm going too fast, and then I slow down. So, but the sign records how fast I was going when I was in front of the sign. And even though I slow down, and then, you know, when I get past it all, I speed up when it could be, um, so sometimes those signs can be a little bit misleading about actually how fast somebody's going, sometimes it's obvious they're going over the speed limit.
Actually, it's true, much in South, Southwood, not Southwood, we're James House, there's a sign.
Right, it's gonna hit you while you're still going.
So we could monitor what's actually happening, once they've actually had the sign flash at them and have gone halfway, um, you know, they would be probably beyond your house, maybe right around the corner where there's the last straightaway. Um, we could have, we could request to have, um, those monitoring cables put in for a week, and then we would have some data on how fast people are going once they've gone past the signs, and we would also have a record of the type of vehicle. Um, so if it's, if it's all these big trucks that are speeding, um.
It's not one of the big trucks, is it?
It's every, pretty much, most everybody, yeah.
Why don't we try with the Washington County Sheriff's?
Okay, all right, so, um, what time would you say, five, six to eight, five to eight? We get, we have them for three hours a week, so.
Number eight is usually.
Pretty close, maybe from seven thirty to.
No, I would say five, yeah, five to eight.
He just said that the trucks come down from the quarry and be four to seven.
Yeah, I know sometimes I'm down there, um, about six thirty and there are granite trucks headed south.
Yeah, that's usually about the time they come off.
Yep, 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 it's their first round.
And then he said the second truck, their second round usually comes down at about nine.
Right, after the, after the school.
And that's just them, there's.
Where are these asphalt trucks?
Yeah, I'll say that the class of in Coventry.
I, I don't necessarily think it's, it's these folks.
Oh, no.
Let's just say if you're Canadian trucks, they can start going from there five o'clock in the morning.
You've got that, and you've got the regular trucks full of trash.
Yeah, they got you to have some waiting in the parking lot when you open the door, fuck off.
Yeah.
We're really not my attention is the asphalt trucks and the dump trucks.
Yeah, because they're, they're, I think they're coming out of Coventry.
They're coming out of Coventry, well.
Actually, they're coming out of Waterford.
Oh, Waterford, wow.
That's right.
They must have a paving project, they gotta come through here then.
Well, the plant in Berlin broke down.
Oh, so they're running all the pavement down through here.
Right.
Aren't your interstate in from that?
Well, yeah.
Well, but not over here.
Not over here.
With your weight, it's on the interstate.
There's interstate, we're running a lot, but they can't run away.
Right.
But they, right, right, on Route fourteen, that makes no sense.
And that's not a town, you know, Route fourteen is not a town, a town issue.
It's a state road.
It's a state, it's a state road.
I'm there, who, I believe.
State, it's a state, state highway, yeah, state road. But that's my understanding.
But we definitely.
And interstate, however, Route two and Route three up to are federal highways.
Okay.
They have a US sign on, you know, US M one.
Yeah.
That is, they're a federal.
Two, two, okay.
About eighty-nine, yeah.
That's federal, it's the interstate.
So it sounds like the first thing we're gonna try is to get the Washington County Sheriff's Department there in the morning.
In the morning.
During.
Yeah. Is that the only great thing? I mean, actually, we could use them for a whole bunch of reasons.
Both senators also suggested we contact the DOT, is it DOT?
Yeah, which is basically VTrans.
Transportation, yeah, about reducing the speed limit.
Okay, that is a. Okay, that is a process, we could, um, we could start that.
Yeah, and they'll.
But DOT can also ticket them, if they're speeding.
Absolutely.
The Sheriff's Department would do that.
Would do that.
If it's, if it's DOT, transportation DOT, they protect with the federal officers, they can take it from the dead tire of the highway.
Oh.
DOT, yeah.
VTRAN.
VTRAN, yeah.
Yeah. I think that was thirty-five.
At least, at least thirty-five.
Yeah.
So we can service, we can service something simple.
Right.
And see, see about our timing.
And then he's gassing it.
Now they have a super duper stereo system, you hear them.
You're gonna have a problem with these, huh?
I was thinking, that's like the E when I had the others convert them up there.
You wanna have a problem with that?
Yeah, but a little more trouble. But we definitely share your concern.
Yeah, we agree, absolutely.
Okay.
They don't treat us any better when we got a wreck and we're standing in the road, they'll go past our flaggers and hit fifty before they get through your seat.
That's true.
That's not, that's terrifying.
That's, come on now.
Anything else more about that subject? Thank you, Skip, nice weekend night. Okay, so moving on, um, Town Hall, uh, so we have an issue with the paint on the building. We did, uh, a little kind of applicator test, um, when the suspicion, um, was raised by a neighbor of the Town Hall about lead in the paint, um, and the little applicator did indicate that there was, uh, some lead in the paint, um. But however, that doesn't hold up, the applicator's gonna hold up, um, for state statutes, so it does seem like we're pretty much, um, in line for having the paint tested. So, um, and I know Diana has done a little bit of research on somebody that could do that for us, um. So, um, let me just share a little bit about, um, what I found. According to the, I talked to someone, um, named Chris Kinnick at, uh, from the Health Department and, um, you know, he sent me some information, which I think I sent on to everybody. Richard, I don't know if you have an email, if you get emailed it up, but I, I didn't send it on to you because I didn't think that you did. And I didn't have. Yeah, I didn't.
Use your iPhone.
Why come over here?
Use your iPhone.
Okay. So basically, the, the Health Department assumes, if you're working on it, any building that was built pre nineteen seventy-eight, and this one has probably at least a hundred or forty years on that, um, that it was built, to assume that the paints, all paints and coatings, um, are lead based, um, unless a Vermont licensed lead inspector has inspected the property and found otherwise by use of an X-ray fluorescent analyzer or submittal of the paint chips for laboratory analysis. Vermont law does not recognize the use of swab test kit, kits for paint testing. Even though that does give us an indication that probably there is lead, yeah. So then it goes on to where other spots where lead, um, paint is commonly found, usually on steel or or buildings that, um, are made out of metal, um, metal coatings. So, and then there's a list of lead safe work practices, according to the Health Department person, um, the fact that the building is not, um, a daycare or, um, and not a residence, um, the painting contractor does not have to be licensed to, um, Vermont licensed, uh, to work on a lead, lead paint building. And I was told by the person from the Health Department that as long as all of the work and trying to remove the old paint was done by hand, either by scraping or, um, sanding, hand sander, not a mechanical sander, that, um, everything.
Go to the gym.
And it would be okay, um, however, there would need to be the need of a plastic apron underneath the work site, um, to catch all of the paint that was removed from the building. And then in the guidelines that were sent out, it also mentions in the prohibited work practices that you can't do any dry scraping, which to me is using a scraper, shaving the paint off, so there's a contradiction in, in what, um, they're putting out for printing information.
Garden hose too, maybe.
Yes, right.
So it seems like the first thing that we need to do is to get the paint tested and, um.
Well, I, I had a thought on that, I mean, I can just about guarantee you got lead paint on this building.
Right.
So I don't know if that's a.
I can't imagine why, how you could not.
Right, so why expend the funds?
When was the action out there put on? That was in the seventies, right?
Well, I think it was the eighties.
So the back part of that should not have lead paint on it.
Okay.
Yeah, it was on there and mine was on there.
And when he drove it?
Probably forty, maybe five years ago. Yeah, but it was only half of that. It was only half of that.
Well, my, my thought process was, well, since it's almost guaranteed, like a hundred percent chance, why, why spend the money and just deal with, just dealing with the.
The distraction that is there.
I was, cause I, there's zero chance they're gonna come back and no lead in that paint. Maybe a little bit of it, like the rear might not have.
Yeah, but that.
These three sides would definitely have lead on it.
It would be really surprising.
I would be shocked, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Be shocked if they didn't, alright, so.
So he has then switched to using the lead safe practices.
Right. Which actually can be actually painting over a lot of material.
Right.
So Diana, you had done a little bit of research on that with the sheriff.
There was, uh, along with the, and information in the Health Department, um, provided with a list of contractors to do testing and remediation and so on. And there was one name, just a man's name, Lyndon Craftery, said, well, why not try him first rather than go to the big firms in Chittuck County, which would use, you know, they're expensive. But anyway, I called the guy and come to find out, he does work for one of the big firms in Chittuck County. His name was John Madigan.
Yeah.
And he, he, uh, associate.
He's the one that did our asbestos testing over here.
And, uh, he basically said, because the bill is so old, to spend several hundred dollars to have it tested for lead, you know, is not worth doing. He did point out that, um, like you said, pre nineteen seventy-eight, um, all buildings are assumed to have some unless proven otherwise. Uh, but since it's not residential and it's not a daycare, all of the stringent rules of the Health Department, um, don't necessarily apply. Um, he did say that the work has to be done in a, a lead safe way, which like you said, including drop cloths and wet scraping, you can't dry scrape, you certainly can't prime, but, um.
I, I could read those lead safe work practices when, when you're finished, if you want.
No, I, yeah, you did.
I, no, I skipped over them, I mentioned it. I, I can read them now if you'd like, but do you, do you wanna finish first?
Well, just, just use drop cloth. Um, I didn't read anything, it said what to do with what's on the drop cloth, but that's something that, uh.
That's the contractor's job.
Yeah, we use our contractor, remind him to tell him how to do it. It hasn't done it before.
So, um, with, with the printout that the Health Department has concerning lead paint, these are the lead safe work practices. Limit unauthorized access to the work area and close the work area with plastic sheeting or other effective lead dust barriers. Wear protective clothing and, and that's for the benefit of the person doing the work. Mist painted surfaces before disturbing paint. Use manual surface preparation methods, do not use work practices that could generate dust. Follow good hygiene practices before leaving the work area to ensure that lead remains in the work area and is not transported to break areas, public spaces, vehicles or home. Uh, use housekeeping and cleanup procedures that will leave the work area in a condition that is safe for reoccupancy. Prohibited work practices are dry scraping. So I don't know how you scrape if you.
So you just say you have to wait it first.
Yeah, okay, I get it, yeah, okay. Use of chemical strippers, particularly those containing methylene chloride, open flame burning or torching. Heat guns operated above eleven hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Dry sweeping of lead contaminated areas or surfaces. So.
But those things like, like, increasing the work area, that's not something you would have to do if you're outside.
Yeah, no, we'd have to put a sheet on.
No, no.
No, you have to have a sheet on the ground.
What we read is the most, the most stringent requirements if you're in a daycare center or residential.
Like you would have to sheet the ground.
Sheet, they have to be, so that all the chips are covered and then they would be, need to be put into, um, a garbage bag, I mean, we could find that out and I would assume you would treat that material as a hazardous material, which, which means that this is the, goes through very specifically set protocols, but that's not, that's really not our job, our contract.
Well, we got, Richard is our.
Richard is our contractor. So we're just kinda.
You're not sure, he's not, he said he was our contractor.
So we're gonna, so we're. I don't think people realize that.
All we're gonna do is.
He ain't scraping that, it's not gonna look good.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna catch.
He ain't scraping that, it's not gonna look good.
Yeah, it's.
Cause it's all built up, so much of it.
And then, so, I mean, the goal is to catch it and keep it. Catch it.
Say it again?
Catch it, keep it.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but I would, one half means trying to avoid a rod.
Yeah, which you can't, which you can't really do.
I guess there isn't a ceiling, is there?
Huh?
Ceilings that you can cover it on.
You can paint over it. Where is it?
They just paint over without scraping.
You can paint over it, but if you don't get, like, a lot of this stuff is cracking in.
I know.
And if you don't get that crack open dust to get some paint in, it's not gonna.
Put aside on the hill.
Look, when it dries, it's gonna pour out.
I agree.
Pour out a little bit and then you're gonna get moisture in it.
The only other fix is you remove all the siding and put new siding on the building.
Yeah.
Well, this is historical building, right?
It is, yeah.
You could get funds.
And, really worried about that, but why didn't that come up when they put the money into the historical mill and have taken care of that?
What historical?
Huh?
What historical?
You must have had a grant or something, put money into this thing.
Oh, yeah, just for the painting, it was just twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget and I encouraged them to do that because I thought it needed to be, uh, painted. And I thought Richard would be a good painter because he's been buying, he's a good painter, but I didn't anticipate lead painting.
So, um.
When I'm down there, I'll just get a spray downtown, that's probably why you're good at painting on your.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure. So, yeah, if he's willing to, yeah, dry, and, and you can't even dry scrape, you have to have a sprayer with you. So, have you done it before with the wet scraping?
No.
He just.
Well, having to save the old stuff, net top, wet, be wet, be out there.
Yeah, he basically.
What do we cost to paint it, scrape it and paint it, what'd be placed inside?
One.
No, we haven't done any, I mean, this is an issue that's just raised, it's.
It's good enough for you.
Yeah, but it's on a historical site, so you would have to jump through many hoops to find out what you could have put back on this.
Well, that's where, you know, we do have, we do, um, we do have this committee that's pretty much formed and we do have some people on the committee that would have a better understanding than certainly I do on how to deal with this situation, um, so, um.
Well, first we could think to decide, uh, can Richard tell us whether he's going to put a drop cloth down out front and scrape it with a spray, having like a one gallon sprayer that maybe could hang from your ladder or something and I know it's not gonna look this good, but.
How much more spray do you have to do, Richard?
Or should we?
How much more spray do you have to do?
He has basically.
All, all the way around?
Right. This side of the building, behind you, the wall behind you and the front of it.
You got this side down.
This side is all, has been done.
And just gotta clean the front.
Yeah, no, but it's all been scraped.
So we got away with that?
Well, so far we've got away with it, I mean, people could make an issue of it if they wanted to.
Yeah.
The town would be liable, that's, that's.
There's been a lot of money for.
That's why we're trying to address the subject now.
A residential wants it done, you know, it could have been a hobby.
Yeah, no, we could, the town could be seriously liable for, for this. The town could be seriously liable, that's my concern.
Right, because I think one of the, somebody that lives in this building has Lyme disease and they're dead. They've got a compromised immune system. Lead poisoning is not gonna help and they might have a case.
Well, even if somebody.
Yeah, the rules are very clear that we can just do it anyway.
If somebody in town who doesn't live right next door raises an issue, they would have also a valid reason because it's lead paint.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, they're at, so.
So you're going to do it, right?
We don't have a choice.
So, I mean, one scenario is to have what's been scraped, painted and then just, we figure out.
There's an option, you can go. You can put piping on.
Right, yeah, well, now that, it's on the national registry.
Well, we have a registry, if you don't ask them for any money, you can do it.
I don't know about that.
I believe, and I better download it, you know, they don't have no money.
They're gonna get us.
Take a truck, so what I've already did, all the operations we did, if you didn't take any money. But I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying. I mean, our other option, we do nothing, then the paint falls off the building, it rots.
Yeah, well, I, I think we could survive a year or two.
Oh, yeah.
The way it is. So we just need to figure out what the best thing to do is and finish up what's been done so that at least that.
I'll get that from that.
Yeah. And, um.
If you're thinking of moving along in my front lawn, I have a dumb windowsill.
Yeah. Well, if you haven't scraped and done the windows, I, I would say just leave them alone.
Uh, leave them alone, do you give me the okay?
Yeah, just, just, just leave them.
But I know when I, if I scrape by hand, it's gonna be a hundred hours.
Yeah, yeah.
It ain't gonna work too good.
Okay.
Are you willing to do it though? Are you willing to do the scraping by hand, using the spray?
If the money's there, I'll do anything.
Hey, that's not yet.
Get it, get it, if some money ain't there, he ain't gonna do it.
I mean, the dialogue solutions, if you're willing to scrape and paint and wet, then we just do that. Cause I think any other solution takes years.
Yeah, yeah, and costs a lot of money.
So I, I, I think if you're willing to scrape it, wet and put the tart down, I think that's the route we go. And get it painted, cause again, any other solution I could think of is gonna take us a while to implement.
They want to scrape, I need to, so that's gonna take a while.
Right, we're gonna have to pay, we're just gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah.
So I, maybe you could do the front and then see where we are.
Yeah, get this side done.
Might need another year for another side in the back peak, you know, that's pretty bad, but it's, nobody sees it.
We wait, we wait, so we wait on that.
What?
I said we would wait, we just wait.
So I guess work till like twenty-five hundred or whatever.
So you're gonna have somebody come from the state?
Nope, we're gonna assume it's lead.
Huh?
Yeah, just assume it's all lead. And the little applicator thing sort of told us that, so, yeah. So I guess buy some plastic, roll of plastic and, um.
Or cloth, draw a cloth.
No, the paint tends, and the dust tends to stick to cloth, canvas, so I would recommend plastic.
And we'll pay, we'll, we'll pay. We'll use the drop cloth, we'll wind it on ball, wind it on ball plastic, if you're doing that.
Well, you'll have to put some rocks down.
You have to figure out all your pull up down. Man, I can't remember exactly how to play around with it, let him do it.
Yeah.
So you think the drop cloth will not work?
I think it will, I mean, I think might be to let, let him do what he thinks he should do to capture the paint and since I'm not a painter and my root for advice would be worthless.
But it does make sense that the drop cloth would stay.
It would stick better.
It's just there.
And he's gonna have to have his ladder on top of it.
Correct.
I would say buy a drop, I mean, if you're gonna use a drop cloth, buy one, use it, and then when you're done with it, throw it in the bag with the pink chips. Just.
I, I can get, I can get drop cloth, I don't know.
Well, I.
Is that an accounting tool?
Yeah, well, yeah, but I don't want you to use your own drop cloths and then reuse them somewhere else.
You worry about it.
Well, I know you might worry about it, but the rest of the world is, you know, and you know, if you use it in somebody's house, it's gonna have lead in it, it'll have lead dust in it.
Or you can definitely want to get it.
Well, you can do whatever you want to start, your own personal experience.
Feel for it, right?
You got the.
But I think the town could scrape for a brown cloth that you could just throw away in the end, because it's gonna be filled with.
Now, here's the thing, you got to use piece plastic in there, then rain or something, and the wind blowing, and that plastic is, it'll move out of your mouth.
You'd have to, you'd have to empty, every time you were done scraping, you'd have to empty the plastic out. You would.
Well, not over that, if you got a sprayer, it'd be interesting, you get that, walk on there, something would be on your head.
You'd have to move the plastic away, it would be a pain in the butt, I agree, but that's what you would have to do, because the water would just, the lead would just run right off the plastic and defeat the purpose.
Drop cloth is better.
Yeah, it makes the whole thing, you know, a big headache and a lot more time consuming to do, but if we're gonna do it, we should probably.
Remember, no good deed goes unpunished.
Right. Whenever you're ready to do that.
Thanks for volunteering.
But see, I want to take you to the front, and I'm telling you before you do.
Yeah, I mean, it's spending money and helps see where we land.
Yeah, keep track of your hours, and you know, obviously, you probably have an hourly rate, you gave us a general figure, so when you're getting to the end of that total figure that you gave us, then you're, then you're done. And my.
Or if we haven't finished, you can come back and take another six hours.
Yeah.
Ooh, yeah.
All right. So, just a small tag on this. There is a, it does sound like we have a committee now to explore renovations to the town hall. Mary Jo Allen has agreed to lead the, blew out, I'm sorry, to lead this committee. She is seeing if Liz Pritchett, she approached Liz about this, who's a former Woodbury resident, who has quite a bit of knowledge of historical buildings. If she would be willing, and she said she was interested, but I think she didn't have a confirmation. Diana is interested in being on it. I guess I would be on it as a select board member. I would love still to have somebody from the fire department to be on the committee, and that would pretty much.
And Robin.
And Robin, like, sorry, I knew there was someone else. So, and what we, what we would be doing, basically, I think I explained this last time, is basically just getting a sense of what would be needed for permits, for, you know, some type of plan. There would be nothing really other than a plan for how, you know, what's, kind of figuring out what would be needed as far as information for the renovations, what type of permits might be needed, and what the, what it means to be on the National Registry as a historic building, and what kind of limitations there are with that, which is Mary Jo's and Liz's kind of domain.
There's also, you guys finally have to discuss what future you see for use of this building. I think in the pre-COVID or post-COVID era, you're gonna wanna use it more in the winter?
That's the whole impetus for this whole idea, yeah. As far as I'm concerned, I no longer feel that the space at the town office, I mean, it was always sort of inadequate anyway, it was so small, but now it's, you know, there's a whole nother dimension to that smallness.
There is a community.
There is a community room, which is used for other purposes. Right now, there's a book sale there, so, and that's probably what we will use this winter if we're actually even still meeting in person. I mean, that's a big question, too, at the moment. So, you know, up to a certain.
We must legislate your act.
I, so, so, and Mary Jo is pretty busy with the project right at the moment, but she mentioned in a week or two that that would be done, and so we're, we'll probably be trying to meet for a first meeting in a couple of weeks.
So if Mary doesn't have time, we can be looking around for another energy advisor.
Right.
Somebody that could advise it.
I did call, I did call Efficiency Vermont, and I spoke with someone from there, and they have, had someone who was supposed to get back to me, a regional person who hasn't met, and I called about a week ago, it was Tuesday the last week that I called and spoke with someone, but they have kind of a two-step program that they would do. They have what they call an energy assessment, and it's mostly geared towards electricity, but they would also maybe take into consideration heating, energy, but, and that's free from Efficiency Vermont. They would come and do an energy assessment for, and I was sort of hinting that maybe we would do the town hall, the town office, and the town garage. If it's free, can't hurt to have them look at all, they could do all three sites in a, a visit, you know, a day-long visit. Then, then, the next part, which isn't free, is an energy audit, which is basically hiring a contractor that's on an approved list from Efficiency Vermont. I did this for my house years ago, and they would come and do a series of tests, and it's geared more towards heating, you know, energy efficiency for a building rather than electricity. And then the contractor would have a series of suggestions, which we could take up one at a time. We don't have to do them all at once, but that's, that's kind of out of ways. I think, you know, having this assessment happen first would give us information, especially, you know, for the town hall, and, and, you know, for the town office, too. Those are the two that I'm thinking of, but can't hurt to have them look at the town garage, too.
Is it fair to still look so good?
Well, 30 years from now, maybe, when we're all dead, but, or moved on, let's see. So, how does that, I mean, as far as, you know, an energy assessment, they could do that anytime, we don't have to wait for this committee.
Do it.
What is there to prevent a look at?
Yeah. Well, they know what to look at.
So you know, we don't use it on electricity, we.
We don't.
We're in, we're in life.
Right, and the town, the town office is a different story, with the computers and, and, you know, the heating system there, and the wooden, you know, the, the building itself.
I'd say do it.
Yeah, it's free, so it's not gonna cause us anything.
Schedule it, we should do it.
Okay, all right.
You can see here, but if you tap, tap the window installation.
Oh, that's blowing up, that's.
Well.
You can't keep this place warm in the winter.
No, you can't.
We know, we freeze to death in here.
So. All right, so all.
Walls, floor, or ceiling?
The whole, the whole building, really. I mean, this was built at a time when people didn't worry about the heat.
Hot fire, it couldn't have any.
Yeah, there was a pretty, pretty big wood stove in here, but a sort of pipe ran, probably ran through the building, like the old churches.
Oh, it used to, didn't sit next to the stove there, and tell me, that's all I can tell you. It burned to death.
Okay, so, so I will bug them and, because they did tell me somebody would get that thing. Who's there? So anything else about the town hall?
I'm good.
Good.
I think we beat it up.
Okay, so do we want to jump back to the tax rate?
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Jeff. Take care.
That was the plan list, this is our total.
So you did the math for us, too?
There's the backup, these are the numbers from the education, this is what the backing of the tax bill is gonna look like, the totals, and there's that.
All right. So, it's like the amount is pretty much the same. Okay.
So we're just looking at point zero five four two?
So we're, we're, tonight, we're setting the municipal tax rate, not the tax rate from, for this education, for the schools. So this is just the municipal tax rate that we'd be setting.
So we're looking at this number, point five four two?
Yes. So.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And we set the tax rate at point zero five four two per thousand, right? Per thousand?
Per thousand. Here's, we'll second that motion, right? Any further discussion at all?
How does that compare to the last?
It was point zero five three three last, it's up a little bit, but not much. We did all right. Move it back, come in with the avenue.
Any, any other discussion? So do I hear a motion, or do I hear?
We got the second.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So the tax rate is set at zero point five four two. Great. All right, so, just quickly, there really isn't much for updates, but I thought I would just make the statements. Personnel policy, I did actually hear back from somebody from VLCT, and they said that they're, it's vacation time for the lawyers, but they would hear back from us soon, so.
I hate it. It's the story of my life, just waiting.
And then I did send an email to Patty Garbeck, the Cemetery Commission Chair, if they had heard anything at all from Bear Basset about the new plans that he was gonna come up with, and they have not heard anything at all from Bear. So those things are just kind of.
So Chris, Chris is just gonna interject for a second.
Okay.
I apologize. I think we will have an update for the next select meeting about exact spaces and a delineation of new mapping.
Okay.
For the Westwoodberry Center, so, so, we'll have something to present.
All right, good.
You took some people up there?
I did, I took a student, I took a student up there. It seems like a very easy, and, I'm sorry, I took two students with me up there, and I think that there's a very easy, very easy extension on that cemetery, based on the, on the type of materials that we saw, but we have some augers studies that we've done, and we have some ground penetrating radar that we did to identify previous old grave sites, as well as an extension on the cemetery, because it's not maps at all. I think Ms. Brandy will.
You know her.
It's a, it's basically, it's basically a set of plot lines that are absolutely not accurate. So I think after this is done, it will be a fairly, we'll at least have the data to make a, a good discussion out of it.
Okay.
But it's, all we've done is provide the data, and I think we can move on from there.
Okay, do you have a sense of, from the, the landowners, that?
The landlord.
Where the new, new border would be, because they were gonna change the plan for the extension of the cemetery.
No, so there is no plan on exchanging, excuse me, extending the original plan.
Okay.
It's the same plan that they had originally developed, which is an extension of about 15 meters up slope.
Okay, so in the last discussion that we had with the landowners, there was issues about a stream and a well, and Bear Basset had mentioned that he would come up with a plan to extend the cemetery in a different direction that would eliminate those two issues.
That's correct.
So, and so far, it's my understanding that we don't have that plan.
We don't have that plan, but I think that that plan is what will show up in this next presentation.
And I know one of the concerns was, well, what's underneath the ground, is there ledge there, so I don't know.
No ledge.
But you, you did check that.
Yep, so there's absolutely no ledge there whatsoever, so that part's easy.
All right, and, and I shared, I think, a letter from VLCT at the last meeting, maybe the meeting before, that it is basically up to the select board to.
Right, we're the fiduciary.
Yeah, we're the fiduciaries, so if, if we're gonna go through the expense of the surveying, blah, 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 that's a decision that the select board should make as opposed to the Cemetery Commission. And I think just based on what I heard that night with the landowners, and, you know, it's not that we're voting on that right now, but I would be in favor of having the town, you know, pay for the cost to have a.
As we.
Yeah, man, it's a middle.
No, we have to figure that out.
We're running out of space, we're kind of up against it, so.
There's no more, yeah, there's no more spacing.
I agree, perfect. You basically know where the weeks around are gonna be.
I'm pretty confident that at the, at the, at the next meeting, you will have seen all that data.
Good.
So it will be basically for free.
Okay, all right.
It'll already have been surveyed in with depth profiles as well, so. There's an interesting student project.
Yeah, great. Just, well, I'll let you know after the meeting. We had, there's actually another project that, using those same tools that the road crew is thinking about for you.
Sounds good.
Anyway, I'll share that after. So, anything else about the cemetery at all? Okay, so briefly, I thought, you know, we might just briefly discuss what's happening in the world of the Delta COVID variant. There, I know that there are a number of entities that are beginning to be concerned about COVID, and I just wanted to just have some thoughts on what we should do as a town, is, you know, partly just for the select board meetings or any, any town government meetings. Do we want to kind of wait for the state? You know, I mean, I think our governor and his crew did a wonderful job getting us through the first round, and when there are concerns that they have, it seems obvious that we would follow the guidelines.
Because it's hard at the public meeting, you can't change that unless the legislature does another.
Right.
Vote.
Yeah, yeah, but we can, you know, if, if things continue to get worse, we could go back to some of the practices that we had beforehand, physical spacing, mask wearing, having a sign-up sheet so that there could be some contact.
I'm not a fan of any of those things, just because I went through the vaccination process and.
Yeah, well, with this, with the, with this new variant, there does seem to be, I'm trying to remember the term, it's cross something or other, crossing over, crossover, I think is.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I worked through the whole pandemic, transported COVID people up to my eyeballs in it, and so I'm still here.
Yeah.
Were you vaccinated?
Yeah, even prior to vaccination, I was transporting COVID patients, so I'm just.
I understand this line of the variant is children who are.
Yeah, younger.
More susceptible, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, I am definitely, well, I'm in favor of whatever is the best practice for everybody involved, so, and, you know, I don't like wearing a mask any more than anyone else does, but if it's necessary to protect other people, then I would wear a mask. I mean, it could be a personal choice, but.
I disagree, but I do think that the guidance from the state is usually pretty robust.
Yeah.
If we follow those guidelines, I think that we're doing best practices, so I'd like to stick with the guidelines from the state, as best as we can.
All right, yeah, no, that, I was fine with it.
Harshman.
How do our town office people feel about what's happening?
You're all good, Derek.
How are the state guidelines?
Took a lot of the shield, some of them, which could be put off, but they have, they came a concern, but they will come in the office, they don't mind wearing masks if they have to, but they won't have to.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll kind of wait and see what the state guidelines are. I'm fine with that, too. Yeah, we'll try to, as long as the weather holds up, we'll try to have the windows open, so we have pretty good circulation.
Almost everybody, I mean, I'm just not that concerned right now, so everyone's vaccinated, I don't see a lot of people getting sick, and so I just.
We do have two faces of the market.
There are a couple, yeah, there are some around, yeah.
Even six-foot distancing is not a bad thing to deal in a room like this.
Right.
You won't see me going to huge crowds and cuddling up with everybody, I will say that.
Sounds like a good plan.
Good plan, but it does need smart.
All right. Good, thank you for having us.
We're definitely not death stances.
Well, we're definitely not Death Santas, Death Santas.
Yeah.
Any other business that anybody would like to bring up?
I think I'm out.
Okay.
Good for you.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Any further discussion on adjournment? All those in favor?
Please stop.
Bye. Bye, okay, until we're done.